Good evening and welcome to the Monday, March 28th Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand as you are able for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Mrs. Lavelle, could you please do a roll call?
Mrs. Costelli, Mr. Doring.
Here.
Mrs. Passeretti, Mrs. Raccio.
Here.
Ms. Regan.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds, Mrs. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Votto.
Here.
Seven members present and voting.
Thank you very much. And we will start this evening with reports from our student representatives. First of all, Lyman Hall, is Erin here? Hi, Erin.
Good evening. Everyone is getting excited as we enter the final quarter and get to the end of your activities. So on March 24th, the juniors took the SAT, which was very successful. And while the juniors were taking the SAT, the college and career centers from Lyman Hall and Sheehan organized a very successful career fair. Thirty-four community professionals participated in the event, as well as 550 students. This past month, there have been spirit days for best buddies awareness month. Best buddies color is purple, so on Friday, students and teachers show their support by wearing purple. And another spirit day that we had was on March 21st, and it was crazy sock day for world down syndrome day. As the weather gets warmer, many different clubs are hosting cleanups. The National Honor Society has a Wharton Brook Park cleanup that was rescheduled to this Thursday, March 31st. And then Key Club Best Buddies and FFA are partnering to host a campus cleanup at the school on March 30th from 2:00 to 4:00. Recently, Lyman Hall got new musical directors, which means it is looking like we will have a musical again, which is exciting. And then the spring sports have started, and everyone is looking forward to attending those games. And lastly, I just wanted to congratulate the boys indoor track team for winning the CIAC state championship. Thank you.
And from Mark T. Sheehan High School, Paul Anisha.
All right, it's just me today, but good evening, everyone. So on March 1st, we held our Credit for Life for the sophomores, which is an event for learning about financial planning and financial literacy. And on March 2nd, we held the Virtual Parent Choice Awards. On the 17th, the National Honor Society Service Committee conducted an independent bottle/can drive to help raise money for the Wallingford Animal Shelter. And on Friday, the 18th and the 19th, the Sheehan High School Dramatic Arts Society presented their spring musical, high school musical onstage. It was amazing turnout, and we are so proud of all the hard work that went into making this production a success. On the 16th, a sophomore class hosted a school-wide volleyball tournament after school, where students and faculty had the opportunity to participate in intense competition for prizes. We also administered the in-school SAT for juniors on March 24th. And with the conclusion of winter sports, the Sheehan hockey team made it to the CIAC D2 hockey semifinals. And I also want to give huge congratulations to our girls indoor track team, who are the 2022 CIAC state champions. We're so proud of all of their hard work and dedication this year. DECA also concluded the role-play section of the competitive events with four members placing a state finalist. We also launched our official online school store. Student Council and Positive Impact Club collaborated on the 24th to make and decorate picture frames for U.S. troops. And we also held the seal of my literacy testing on the 17th. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. We will now move on to the presentation of awards. We would like to first recognize the Mark T. Sheehan High School Girls Indoor Track Team for being named the 2022 Connecticut State Champions, CIAC Class M. Congratulations, ladies. Mrs. Blizzi.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations to all of you. What a wonderful accomplishment. I know you've all worked very hard, so it's a really exciting thing. And so I wanted to invite up tonight the athletic director from Mark T. Sheehan. Hi, Mr. Chris Steely, who is going to say a few words and then introduce our stars of the evening.
Am I good? Oh, yes, I am. Hi. Firstly, thank you, thank you to the board for recognizing us tonight at the Central Office. It's nice to be back. I think last time we were here was when our football team won, and soon thereafter, you know, everything shut down for a little bit, and we were all virtual, so it's great to be back up here. We did have many accomplishments in the meantime, but those, you know, we were unable to be here to get recognized in front of the board, so very happy to do that. You know, I just want to talk a little bit about the team and the accomplishments. Firstly, we had a first-year head coach, Dale Nozel, and it was an incredibly seamless transition from Coach Farley, who had coached the indoor team for years, to Coach Nozel, and in his first year, literally hit the ground running and did a tremendous job. And he was recognized individually as the SEC Coach of the Year for indoor track. So congratulations to Coach Nozel on that great accomplishment. And, you know, the one thing about track, a lot of people think about track as an individual sport, and I think the thing about this team that was so special is even though it's made up, you know, you have your relays, but it's made up of many individual events, is you were a true team. And to see you at the meets genuinely rooting hard for each other to get that team goal and to put the team goal above all of your individual accomplishments was really great to see. And I think the coaches did a tremendous job of just facilitating that culture within your team of team-first, and that was really something special, and that's why you were able to accomplish everything that you did. A few of the individual tremendous accolades that I just want to recognize before we call you up here one at a time. We had our relay team, a 4x200 relay team that was made up of, and I probably won't say your names in the order you ran, but maybe I will, Erin Brennan, Avery Winters, Patrice Mansfield, and Amanda Castaldi. And they were the individual, or they were the relay state champions, and they were also, they went on to New England, and they were the New England champions this year for the 4x200, so congratulations for that. At the, we also, as a team, were the SEC champions this year. We were able to defend our title. There wasn't a meet last year, but 2020 and then 2022 as the SEC champions. And the most outstanding athlete of the SEC championship meet was Avery Winters. Congratulations on that. And then also recognized as the SEC Most Outstanding Athlete of the Year was Erin Brennan. Congratulations for that. And Erin, Erin along with some of the other teammates that I mentioned and more, were able to go to New York a couple of weeks ago and had a tremendous opportunity to compete in Nationals there, and they all performed exceptionally well. Erin was able to win her division in the triple jump, first place there. And, you know, the relays did great, the individual sprinting, everybody was great. So to have Sheehan recognized on a national stage like that was outstanding. At this time, I just want to call up our head coach, Dale Nozel, I mentioned SEC Coach of the Year, to help me present some of these certificates. You can clap for him. I should say, do you want to say a couple of words first, not to put you on the spot?
Sure. I mean, this year stepping in for Coach Farley, knew I had big shoes to fill, but also that we had a very talented team coming back. So a lot of them, we had four girls who went and competed at outdoor Nationals at the end of last year. I told them, like, take two weeks off before coming back and getting in the weight room and doing stuff. One of them was going on vacation, I don't know, one week after coming back, and she's like, well, can I just work out this week, and then I'll be gone for two weeks and, like, take those weeks off? And so, like, they were ready to go, ready to come back. A few of them were in the weight room three, four days a week over the course of the fall. And then they just kind of led the way and set the example for the underclassmen on how to do things. Very grateful to have such an amazing, talented group of young student athletes in my first year to kind of make us look good as a staff. So a lot of them are graduating over this, in June, and hopefully that they set a good enough example that the juniors and underclassmen will be able to fill their shoes next year, and we can continue to have success.
All right, so I'm going to call all your names, you can come up and get the certificate from Coach, and then just come right around, and we want to get all of you right up here on stage so that everybody can see up here behind us, okay? Savannah Baumann. Erin Brennan. Amanda Castaldi. Talia Crispino. Mariah Fournier. Danielle Geary. Allison Kader. Angelica Cottula. Lauren Lindberg. Patrice Mansfield. Olivia Platt. Michelle Rabeni. Ava Rafon. Natalie Swazinski. Avery Winters. And Maya Resin. I'll move out of the way so you can see them. But I just want to say, you know, they worked extremely hard all year, definitely had their share of adversity, you know, thinking about the end of December and the beginning of January, COVID wasn't very kind to us, but we fought through that. And, you know, the amount of hard work that you guys put forward to accomplish what you did are all, you know, great life lessons that are going to help you moving forward in life. So congratulations on this well-deserved honor.
I'll be brief, but I just want to say that to win, take a year off because of COVID and come back and win again, that is persistence, that's resilience. You guys all had your heart into it. There's obviously a lot of leaders on this team for you guys to mentor the underclassmen, and you should all be very, very proud. And to the parents, I know what it takes. You guys deal with the track meets and the after-school stuff and the carpooling, so be kind to your parents, give them a hug tonight, even though you probably don't want to, okay? Thank you all. We're very proud of you. Thank you very much. Now, we would like to recognize the Lyman Hall High School Boys Indoor Track for their outstanding accomplishment of being named the 2022 Connecticut State Champions of the CIAC Class M.
You're always smiling, I love it. First, I would also like to thank the board for your help with sports and your support of sports, but inviting us here tonight. I'd also like to thank Central Office of all their support throughout the year. But I also wanted to thank the student athletes, the parents, and the coaches over these last couple of years. It's been tough, it's been difficult, but they've done an amazing job. And for that, I'm forever grateful. They did an amazing job. And to have two teams win the state title here is also fantastic. And on behalf of Lyman Hall, I want to congratulate the Sheehan girls for winning their championship. As you will notice, Chris is more verbose than I am. That's okay, that's what makes us different. I'd also be remiss if I did not thank the maintenance department, Mark. I know during the winter they don't do as much, but during the fall and the spring, they do an amazing job for all of us, so Mike Napolitano and Andy, they do a great job. I'd also like to recognize a few of the athletes that we have. AJ Creco, Jake Siemens, and Chance DeCrescenzo, they were all record journaals. I'd also like to recognize Chance as All-State in the pole vault. I remember the week before the class championship, I talked to Coach Palmer, I said, what do the chances look like? He goes, eh, you know, if we have a decent day, probably, you know, maybe top three. If we have a great day, everything is perfect, everything is right, we could win it. Obviously, they won it. And the best thing I like about being involved in sports is if you look in the paper, there's a picture of, I mean, he's smiling there, there is a smile right there, just a pure joy of when they won. And that's the best part, and I think anybody who's in education, seeing a kid smile, that's the best part. I would, just once again, I would like to congratulate Coach Palmer and thank him for all the hard work that he's done. Coach Addo with all the distance stuff, and Coach Nylander, they were unbelievable, did an unbelievable job. And the best thing about the three of them, they don't just coach one season, all three of them coached all three seasons. Dave is the cross-country coach down at DAG, does the indoor track, and then he's now coaching girls across. So he's not getting any time off. Coach Nylander, I know it's technically, but not a third sport, but he does powder puff, which takes up tons of time, obviously, so to me, that's another sport. But he helps with indoor track, and he's now doing outdoor track. And Coach Addo does cross-country and does indoor track, and now is also doing outdoor track. So on behalf of the kids, I'm going to thank the three of them for all their hard work they put in. At this time, I am going to call up Coach Palmer. He did ask earlier in the day, do I have to say anything? Coach Nozel kind of put him on the spot, so yes, Dave, I guess you are going to have to say something.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate Sheehan and Dale. It was a great season. You guys were loaded all year long, amazing, amazing SEC performance, amazing, amazing state performance. Which brings us to our guys. I don't think we had anybody go All-SEC. I think Max Fuller told me this is the worst team he's ever been on in four years here. And yet, here we are. So I look at this group, and what I see is a group of individuals that came together as a team. Jake Siemens, probably one of the best athletes all around, he could have been on any relay, could have gone All-State. But I sat him down, I was like, we need to do this to be part of the team, need to do, put you in the jumping events, not have you run a relay. If you watched the 4x2, we were second by like two-tenths of a second, sorry, Owen. You got beat the last 55 meters, but we don't talk about it. But he was probably standing there going, I could have won that for the team. But I was like, stick to the plan, stick to the plan. Halfway through the meet, I think we were down by like 20 points, Chance came over to me, he's like, what are you, you're wrong. I was like, stick to the plan, stick to the plan. I didn't know what the plan was halfway through the meet, but I was just hoping something would kind of happen. So this group, really, everybody felt, came together, did what they had to do. We were the last event going in the pole vault, so we were the only team that knew we won, so I was excited. Chance was obviously excited, and he took care of business, and he did the whole, him and AJ scored us the most points in the last event, so nobody really knew we were state champs, which is a great accomplishment. But as I look across this room, I think about how far we've come. I got four freshmen here that are All-State and really holding their own. I got the Conklin Twins that are just built different, they're just, I don't even know, I didn't expect them to be great, but they were amazing this year. If you see them run, it looks like they're uncoordinated, can't even get out of their own way, but you put them on the track, and they're vicious, all 50 pounds of them. So it was great to see them run and compete this year. To my other seniors, to Yaya, he just came on this year, I think he still thinks he's playing soccer, but he came out, performed well, went All-State. I looked at him as our leader on that 4x4, I looked at him and I said, we have to get top three, and we win this meet. He's like, Coach, I got you. I was like, all right. And he goes out there and drops an amazing time after running three events that day. That is a hard, hard thing to do. Max Mason, you guys were leaders of this team this year. You guys totally put the team on your back, set the tone. We really didn't have a season last year, so for you guys to come out and kind of show these young guys what track is, you guys will really set us up for the next couple of years. I'm looking forward to the future, because obviously, many of our kids are young, but remember, it started with you guys. So congratulations on a great season.
All right, so at this time, I'll call the guys up, and just like Sheehan did, if you guys wouldn't mind, standing up here, so we can take a picture at the end. Thomas Conklin. I wanted to say a different name, so you'd have to sit like that for a little longer, but Timothy Conklin. The other difference about the two of us, Chris and I, is he, you know, he's relatively new, he's only been in the district for 15 years. I am now at the point where I have former students who have athletes at Lyman Hall. Yes, AJ, that too. AJ Creco. Chance DeCrescenzo. Michael Fisher. Max Fuller. Yaya Cardad. Owen Rich. Jacob Siemens. And last but not least, captain, and you can see what being a good captain does, Mason Williams. Now, the one big thing, winning a state title, and I'm sure Mr. Daly would say the same thing, that all the kids want to know and want to have, is one of these.
I just want to thank again the coaches and all the athletes. You really make us proud, the boys, that was a huge accomplishment with so many freshmen on your team, and I agree with the coach, you've set us up for success in the future. So congratulations to all of you, and like I said before, to the parents, all the driving, all the picking up, all the late dinners. I appreciate everything that you do for the athletes and for the school system by letting them play. Boys, give your parents a hug tonight. Thank you, everyone. We do have one more recognition tonight, but if you do feel like you would like to go home and work on homework or do other things and not stay for the rest of our riveting meeting, it's about five minutes until the UConn women start playing, feel free to do that. We can wait for a minute or two if anybody does want to leave, and then we'll move on to recognition for Board of Ed members from Mrs. Blizzi. They could have. I just want to make sure I turn my phone off. Oh, yes, they would. Oh, they all looked great. It's so nice to have students here again. Okay, Mrs. Blizzi.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody.
I know how to clear a room, it's all you.
Yeah. So this month is a month where we get to recognize all of you and all of your hard work and dedication to the school system, to our students, to our staff, to all of us here at Central Office, to all the families. We know how much time and hard work and dedication you put in to all of the meetings that we have, our committee meetings. Anytime we call on you for a special board meeting, you are all always willing to jump in and help out. And so we cannot thank you enough for everything that you do for all of us. You know, you all have your own lives and jobs during the day, and then you still find time for all of us. So thank you to all of you. In, you know, the fashion that Dr. Menzo has always done with the books is something that we'd love to continue. It's always such a lovely honor, I think, and it's so nice, because these books go back to our libraries. And so our librarians have recommended books to us, and tonight, I'm just going to go through quickly each of the books. Each book is dedicated to one of you. We've selected them, and then I'll also tell you which library they're going to go into, and you'll have an opportunity to read them before they then go into the libraries for circulation. And thank you to Linda, who puts these lovely labels on the inside of the books. We appreciate all of that, so thank you so much. So I'm going to go ahead and get us started. The first book I have is The Year We Learned to Fly by Jaclyn Woodson, and this is going to go to the Moses Wyde Library, and this book is going to go there in honor of Mrs. Roscoe. This book, to me, really talks about, it's a lovely character, it has beautiful illustrations, but it really talks about a brother and a sister who follow their grandmother's advice to use their imagination to lift them up out of their boredom and to come up and do something really good. So to me, this is just a lovely book about spending time of doing something that you kind of create in your mind, and that even though it's cold weather and we're all inside like today, your imagination can take you to so many places. So this book is in honor of you. So at the end of the night, I'll hand it over to you, so you can take a look at it, and then when you're done, it will go to the Moses Wyde Library. You're welcome. The next book I have is Just Help: How to Build a Better World, and this one is go to Mr. Doring. This book is going to be This book is going to be at the Highland Library, and this is a beautiful story written by the U.S. Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor, inspired by all to help others and their community. So, it's all about everyone coming together to do great within the community and within the world. So, I know how much you do here and outside of here, so I thought this was really a perfect book for you. So, you'll have an opportunity to enjoy it, and then it will go in Highland's circulation. The next book, and I know Mr. Reynolds is not with us tonight, but the one we picked for him is going to go to the Parker Farms Library, and it's all about, it's called Maker Lab Outdoors, and it's 25 super cool projects about building, inventing, and creating, and giving students an opportunity to discover new things, and one of my favorites in this is the butterfly feeder. So, it takes them through all these different activities that they can do at home, that have templates in the back, all things that remind me totally of him with all of his science background, and I think he really would enjoy this. So, we'll make sure this gets to him, and then we'll put it in the Parker Farms Library in his honor. So, I'm going to move this, sorry, thank you. The next book we have is "Why Not You?" It's going to go in the Cook Hill Library, and this book is dedicated to Mr. Ray Ross. And this book is all about dreaming big, and having goals and aspirations, and it talks about these students in the book, always listening to their parents or getting good advice from their parents, and the parents keep saying, "Well, why not you? If you can dream big, why can't you do it? Of course, you can do it." So, it's all about this journey of students really thinking about all the things they want to be in life, and all their different opportunities, and expanding their mind to say, "Well, you could do it, why, why can't you do it?" So, this book will be there for you in your honor, you'll have a chance to see it, and then we'll leave it there for you. The Great, my kid's got a kick out of this book, too, The Great Math of a Chicken, and it's hide and go seek. This book is, actually, Cook Hill gets two, so there's one for the preschool as well. This one is in honor of Mrs. Regan. This one is all different kind of math equations and things that go through it. It's all about them going through and using different things, but it's in like a nice chapter book form, and so I thought, since you're always, you're in charge and the chair of our operations committee, this is very fitting for you, so enjoy it.
I have to say, one of the worst subjects in school is math.
Well, you wouldn't know it, so thank you.
Thank you.
The next, next book we have is "Change Sings: A Children's Anthem." And this book, excuse me, is for Mrs. Castelli. This, in this book, it's going to be at the Pond Hill Library, and these children learn that they have the power to make change, either big or small, in the world, in their communities, but most importantly, in themselves. And so, it takes them through that journey in this, and it's kind of written through a song theme, so I thought this was a very powerful book for you. This will be at Pond Hill. This next book will be at the Rock Hill Library, and this is Camilla and Maya's Big Idea. And so, this book is dedicated to Mrs. Raccio. These are two sisters who have this great, big idea, they want to turn their empty apartment courtyard into a playground. And so, it's based on a true story, and they come up with a plan, they write a letter to their landlord, and it takes you through the whole process of how they get the community to come together and to help build this playground for them. So, this book will be there in your honor. This next book is to Mrs. Passeretti, and I know she's not here tonight, but we'll make sure she gets it as well. It's "If Animals Built Your House." So, it's a book that is about, it takes students through the process of imagination and animal facts, but it talks about how all these different animals build all their different homes, and what they use and how they do it, and it makes the kids really think about what house would be perfect for them, and if they didn't live in the house they have, which one would they live in and why? So, a very interesting book, and has a lot of fun facts in it, and it's a really good STEM kind of STEAM book for students this age. So, this book will be at the Stevens Library in honor of Mrs. Passeretti. And the last book I have is going to go to the Mary G. Fritz Library, and this was one of the other books I think we used last time, too, I think it was Mrs. Purcell, I think, as well, and I really do love this book. It's going to go to the Fritz Library, and it's out of my heart, and it's in honor of Mr. Vado. And this book is about a little girl who has a few disabilities, but she's determined to not have that define her, and she has all these wonderful experiences, and she's determined to show everyone all that she can do in her, in this process. And it's a very touching and lovely book, I don't want to give too much away, but it really is a beautiful book. So, this book will be at Fritz School in your honor, so you'll have a chance to see it as well. So, again, thank you for everything each and every one of you do. I know it's a lot of work and a lot of time, but we really, truly appreciate it, as do all of our staff, our students, and our families. So, thank you for everything you have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle, that was very thoughtful, and you put a lot of time into that, so thank you very much. Okay, I think that's everything for our awards. Public comment, is there any public comment tonight? Seeing none. Next on our agenda is executive session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved, second.
Mr. Vado seconded in by Mr. Ross. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Hearing none, we're in executive session. Welcome back, and I would like to entertain a motion to come out of executive session. Mr. Ross and Mr. Vado, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Hearing none, motion carries, we are out of executive session. Moving along to the consent agenda, I would like to request a motion to approve the consent agenda numbers 7.1 through 7.37, and 7.39 through 7.50.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ross and Mrs. Castelli, thank you, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? Any against, motion carries. Items removed from the consent agenda. I would like to request a motion to approve the proposed adoption revision of Regulation 5123A, Administrative Regulations Regarding Promotion and Retention.
So moved.
Mr. Ross, in a second. Mrs. Roscoe is a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I ask that this item be removed from consent so that I have the opportunity to express my no vote. I don't feel, I want to approve this policy as it's written. And for the folks that might be watching, the section of the regulation that I'm concerned with has to do with middle school, and I want to read what the regulation states. It says, "To be eligible for promotion to the next grade, middle school students must achieve a passing average 60 or above in three of the four core area subjects, language arts, mathematics, social studies, and science." We had a discussion about this because I brought this up in one of our committee meetings of my feelings about this. I would like the policy to be rewritten in the following manner. I feel this should be modified and state, "To be eligible for promotion to the next grade, middle school students must achieve a passing grade in language arts and two of the three remaining core subject areas of mathematics, social studies, and science." Obviously, reading and writing, otherwise known as ELA, is one of the most important areas for students to master in order to be successful in their academics. Otherwise, why would it be one of only two, be one of the only two subjects that we measure with STAR assessments? Those STAR assessments showed that in the fall of 2019, about 57% of our eighth graders were on watch or at risk in reading. That fact should give us reason to be concerned about their future success in high school, when the textbooks they will be reading and comprehending will be much more difficult. The fall of 2021 is an anomaly, as these scores are the result of our year in hybrid learning. However, the facts are the facts, and about 64% of our students in the fall of 2021 were on watch or at risk. While STAR is not the only tool we use to determine the mastery level for reading and writing of our students, it's a pretty important indicator. SRBI, our Scientific Research-Based Intervention, ERLA, our Independent Reading Level Assessment, and PAST, our Biological Awareness Screening Test, are other important tools used to help identify students requiring additional supports to attain mastery in their reading. Why are all these tools for reading? I think it's pretty obvious that without a sound foundation in reading skills, at each grade level, kids are going to struggle. And one final thought, at the high school level, English is the only subject area that requires four full credits for graduation. Why is that? I'm thinking it's because the state realizes its importance for the success out there in the real world. I believe we need to put an emphasis on the importance of ELA in the middle schools where students are preparing for the rigor of high school, and modifying this regulation is one way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Castelli. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, and this is to approve the regulation as stands. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have an explanation of that again?
Sure, we removed it from the consent agenda, but now we're taking action on the approval of the...
As written?
As written. Mrs. Castelli has identified that she wanted it to be removed because she's going to vote against it, which, totally fine, so we're still taking a vote on the existent as it's on the agenda, right, we have to stick to the agenda.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mrs. Lavelle, when you're ready, could you do a roll call for us? Mrs. Castelli?
No.
Mr. Doring?
Yes.
Mrs. Regan?
Yeah.
Mrs. Roscoe? Mr. Ross?
No.
Mr. Vado?
No.
Mrs. Raccio? So, the motion fails. Motion fails. Okay, thank you. Mrs. Bellisi, Mrs. Latour, we'll talk about next steps and how to proceed. And the next item on our agenda is correspondence. Mrs. Roscoe?
Thank you so much. So, our first gift is from the Ben and Lucy Anna Walton Fund of the Denver Foundation, recommended by Choate Rosemary Hall, and it was given to the Wallingford Public Schools, the Center for Innovation and Design, and Aerospace Experience to Mars, and the value was $2,500, so thank you very much. We really appreciate this donation for this really exciting, noteworthy program we have going on here in Wallingford. The second gift that I would like to acknowledge is also from Choate Rosemary Hall, and giving to the Wallingford Public Schools IT Department. The value was $4,475, and this was for 10 Apple MacBook Airs, 10 HP Elite Book Folios, I'm not supposed to read that, so, sorry, we'll just continue on. Let me just go with what I've marked. I do much better digitally, all the papers are really confusing me tonight. Okay, so, our next gift is from White Way Uniform Service, Frank Mazzarella Jr., it is to EC Stevens School, and the value was over $500, so thank you so much for these generous donations, we really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Roscoe. Moving on to our committee reports, our ACES Governing Board Representative, Mr. Ross.
Okay, we had a board meeting on March 10th, and at that time, we received reports from all the magnet schools and the specialized schools. Reports were also given on ACES programs and other schools. We had updated, it was given on the number of COVID cases, the Healthy Food Certificate Program was approved, an updated financial report was approved, and the Learning Walk Protocol was discussed and approved, and we went into executive session to discuss real estate, and after that, we adjourned the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Ross, and the Business Think Tank.
Hi, good evening, we did not have a meeting this month, we are working on rescheduling our meeting for mid-May, so we're in the process of choosing between two dates, so we'll be sure to make sure that goes out to everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Bellisi. And the STEM Steering Committee. Can we get it, I'm not sure if we have an update, I know Mr. Reynolds isn't here.
I do, I have an update.
Thank you, Mrs.
The STEM Steering Committee, or a partial group of the STEM Steering Committee met last month, we decided, given the turn of the calendar year, the change of leadership on the board, as well as within central office, to pull together the administration and Mr. Reynolds to discuss the STEM Steering Committee, the direction that it needs to move in, and where the mission and goals need to be for our Wallingford Public Schools students. So, we created an action plan within our small, little group to review the agendas and the goals from the prior year and/or two, given many of the administrators that were steering that committee have since left the district. We will continue to meet again before the end of the school year, with the hopes of just solidifying where we would like to see this committee go and what we want for the students of Wallingford. In the district, we continue to work on the Center for Innovation and Design in terms of resetting the rooms, based on the fact that it was closed so quickly after it opened due to COVID, taking inventory, planning out for the eventual reopening of the upstairs, and discussing the logistics necessary to provide the students of Wallingford Public Schools with the opportunity to visit the center potentially in the coming school year.
Thank you very much. Exciting things when we get to open that. Next on the agenda is Special Education PTAC Update. Mrs. Turner? Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped, Systemwide PTAC.
That's me again.
Sorry.
That's okay. At our Systemwide PTAC meeting this month, Brian Revard, the president of PTAC, and others shared very positive compliments and feedback from the Parent Choice Awards, that happened earlier this month. It was a great event, and was very well received by the families and by the staff members and all that attended, and he updated the group about events happening within the community. Mrs. Turner, our Assistant Superintendent of Special Education, answered questions regarding the presentation about Gifted and Talented that she provided at the February Special Education PTAC meeting, and Mrs. Bellisi provided a district and budget update to the group. The meeting closed with each school-based PTAC representative sharing what their school was working on for the remainder of the school year. The April Systemwide PTAC meeting is canceled, and the next meeting will be on Tuesday, May
Thank you very much. Mrs. Turner, now it's your turn.
Good evening. On March 3rd, Special Education PTAC met, we had a presentation on assistive technology, we had over 30 parents attend, as well as Board of Education members. On April 7th, we are going to hold our first hybrid meeting of the school year, so we are going to have an in-person opportunity for our parents. We're extremely excited to have Mackenzie Brostovich, who is a psychologist consulting with our district, she'll be presenting mental health strategies for the home environment, so she's really going to support parents in how to support their children at home when they're really struggling mentally. On May 5th, we are going to have our Special Education Resource Fair at Mark T. Sheehan High School. We're still looking for vendors, so if there are even any vendors out there who would like to participate, please contact my office. We've sent out 131 invitations to vendors, and I think we have about 25 returned. We are also putting together the ad book for this event, so we're really extremely excited about that.
So, the Food Service Strategic Planning Committee met on March 24th, last Thursday. Again, the agenda was breakfast in the elementary schools. We discussed, I updated the committee members on the student participation rate. And for those interested, we're currently doing about 153 breakfasts per day at Cook Hill and about 164 at Parker Farms, which is phenomenal. We talked about the methods of preparation, methods of service, and the student perception, which was very positive. And we also reviewed the breakfast service issues, storage and prep limitations, number of labor hours, breakfast supply chain issues from our vendor, and many components that don't work for older students, I'm sorry, that work for older students but not necessarily for younger students. And lastly, we discussed the next set of elementary schools to expand into. Timetable will depend on the labor situation, and we did not discuss middle school expansion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I have heard nothing but positive feedback about breakfast in the elementary schools. So, congratulations and thank you. It's something our families and our students really, really need to be able to be of, on sharp minds and be ready to learn. Awesome. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee.
We had a meeting on March 22nd, and our committee consists of Mr. Ross representing the board, and several teachers, administrators, and some wonderful student voices. So, we are excited about the committee makeup, and we're beginning our work on creating a mission and vision, and also how we can become more, expand our committee to talk about the work that we'll be doing as we move forward as a group and to impact change here in the district. So, we're really excited about that. And our next meeting will be coming up next month.
Thank you. And it's nice to see that committee meeting again. I know it had taken a hiatus during COVID, but it's nice to feel like we're getting back to some normalcy with the committees meeting again. The next is the Facility Steering Committee. Mr. Vado or Mrs. Belizzi?
Yeah, we had a, unless you want to go. We had a short meeting back in the beginning of the month because we had a great task in front of us. The members of the committee, the board members of the committee and Mr. Deptula had to start reading those companies that were interested in doing the in-depth facility And we just got some information on how that should be done and how we should do that. So, we did. We handed it into the town, and the town has accepted Silver Petricelli as the company that will be doing the facility study. And that's it.
Excellent. And that committee's meeting every month, right?
Yes.
Yes. Awesome. Thank you very much. Mrs. Belizzi, did you want to add to that?
No, I was just going to share that our next meeting, I believe, is Monday, April 4th. That's okay. April 4th, yes.
And now that the facility or the company's been selected, when do we expect maybe the commencement of the study?
So, I have a initial kickoff meeting with them set for, tentatively set, for the end of this week. So, I'm waiting for confirmation on that. And so, we'll have more information once we meet with them and then get the timeline and go over all the specifics.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The CAE report. So, one thing that I just wanted to make the board aware of, and I want to thank Mr. Barone for looking up some information. There are multiple bills in Hartford speaking right now to the excess cost funding for special education and the lack of funding there for board members who may not be aware. If a child has special needs, extraordinary expenses with special needs, we can get a portion of that, we're supposed to be reimbursed for 4-point, now Dominic, feel free to jump in if I mess this up, anything that's over the 4.5 times our regular pupil reimbursement rate. What has happened with the state is even though we do have children in that category, they have never funded that excess over the 4.5 at 100%. They've always been sometimes in the 70s, sometimes in the 80s. One of the things that CAE has asked boards to do, and I'm grateful for Mr. Barone to put this together, and I will get it to all the board members, I just ran out of time today to do it, but CAE did send me a two-page leaflet to share as to what excess cost funding really means, so I'll make sure all board members have that. But Mr. Barone did go back over the past nine years, I believe, and he highlighted that the town of Wallingford has lost over $5 million in the lack of funding, the excess over the 4.5 times what they should. So, there's multiple bills in Hartford. It's, there's some saying fund everything over 1 point, 1 pupil personnel costs, and then there's some saying at least start by funding everything over the 4.5 times at So, we'll see what happens, but I will get the information out to the board if there is something that the board wants to formalize a letter on and we can send on behalf of the board. I'm happy to do that. We could talk more about it when everybody has the information. And again, my apologies for not having it tonight. I just ran out of hours today. But that is really what I kind of have been working on with CAE. Next on the agenda is old business. I don't believe we have any this evening. Moving on to the Instructional Committee, Mr. Vado.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve a leave of absence. I make a motion that the leave of absence for Jennifer Stackowich be approved without pay in accordance with the provisions of the current teacher's contract from April 20th, 2022 through June 15th, 2022.
Second.
And at this time, we're taking a roll call? For a vote?
Okay. Mrs. Castelli?
No.
Mr. Doring?
Yes.
Mrs. Regan?
Yes.
Mrs. Roscoe?
No.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Vado?
No.
Mrs. Raccio?
No.
Motion does not pass. Thank you, Mrs. Lavelle. So, the leave is not approved. Back to you, Mr. Vado.
At this time, I will turn this over to our Superintendent of Instruction, Assistant Superintendent of Instruction, Mrs. Latour.
Thanks, Mr. Vado. This evening, we have the second read for our policies that we actually did last Monday evening on the 21st. And so, I would like to batch these a little bit, given the quantity of them, and I will point out the changes that we made after the first read. So, items 12.1 through 12.16 are proposed deletions. If you recall from last week, these deletions are being proposed either due to the fact that they're redundant, they were never deleted when they should have been, or because we rewrote the policy in such a way, we no longer need the regulation. So, I am asking, does anyone have any questions or concern with this batch of deletions? Okay. So, the next round, I'll go through each policy. The first one, 12.17, is Policy 5141.3, which is Health Assessments and Screenings. This was collaborated on with Kathy Nealon, our nurse coordinator for the district. It was a significant redo, given the fact that it has been 10 years since the last time we looked at it. This is up to date now with all the current legislation in terms of what is required for a health assessment and what screenings are done within the school system. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, or changes that they would like to recommend? The next one is Policy 5141.231, Psychotropic Drug Use. This is an update, last updated 20 years ago in 2002. This brings it up to current year. Minor changes to language and legal references were added. Any questions, concerns, or changes that anyone would like to recommend? The next policy is a new policy, 5141.311. We decided, if you recall, to separate out the immunization requirements that are required by the state of Connecticut into its own separate policy. This now is up to date and current with our current Connecticut general statute. Any questions, concerns, or changes that anyone would like to recommend? This next policy, 5144.4, is also new, Physical Exercise and Discipline of Students. This separates out the information that we are legally responsible for in terms of prohibiting the removal of a recess period for discipline or for makeup work. We felt that this was important enough to stand on its own. So, we removed it out of the wellness policy and made it its own policy. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, or changes that they would like to recommend at this time? Next policy is 5134, Married and Pregnant Students. This was an update as it was last revised in 1997. So, this just brings it up to current alignment with general statute. Any questions, concerns, or changes to language that anyone would like to recommend? This following policy, 5141, Student Health Services. Updates were made after the first read to change the first sentence where it speaks to the district appointing a medical advisor, not the Board of Education. So, those changes were made and reflected in the second read version. Does anyone have any additional changes that they would like to recommend at this time? The next policy is 5141.4, Reporting Child Abuse and Neglect. This was also a total redo, currently aligned with state law for mandated reporters. Mr. Ross did have a question on this one about board members being mandated reporters, and board members are not as they are not employed by the school system. So, I just wanted to make sure that I answered your question.
Thank you very much.
The next policy, 5141.5, Suicide Prevention. This was an update as the policy was last revised in 1995. This reflects our current operations related to suicide prevention. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or changes they would like to recommend? The corresponding regulation was reviewed by Mr. Loomis, our Wellness Coordinator. This aligns with our school system's current practice. This regulation was last revised in 1990, so this is a much-needed update. Any questions, concerns, or changes that are recommended at this time? The next policy is 5141.7, Concussion Management for Sports and Its Corresponding Regulation. This was reviewed by our athletic directors as well as Kathy Nealon, our school nurse coordinator. This is aligned with CIEAC regulations and what school districts are required to follow in terms of concussion protocol. Any questions or concerns or changes that you would like to recommend? The next one is Policy 5141.21, Administering Medication to Students. There were changes made to this particular policy to bring it up to current state legislation. This was a model provided by Shipman Goodwin. Any concerns, questions, or changes anyone would like to recommend? The next one is Policy 5141.22, Administering Medication to Students. There were changes made to this particular policy to bring it up to current state legislation. This was a model provided by Shipman Goodwin. Any concerns, questions, or changes anyone would like to recommend? The next policy is 5141.22, Communicable and Infectious Diseases. These had minor updates, last revised in 1995. We removed some language, added additional language, and aligned it to current legal references. Any questions, concerns, or changes anyone would like to recommend? The corresponding regulation was a heftier lift in terms of changes. Mrs. Nealon went over this to assure that the regulation was aligned with current district practice. Any questions, concerns, or changes that anyone would like to recommend? The next one is Policy 5141.31, Physical Examination for School Programs. This was last revised in 1996. Current language was added, a language was removed to make sure we were aligned with what the responsibilities are for our school system related to interscholastic sports. We also included the pre-participation physical evaluation form for your review. Any questions, concerns, or changes anyone would like to recommend? This next one, Sunscreen Application in School. After some discussion regarding this one at the last board meeting, I did check in with Mrs. Nealon for parents who return the sunscreen form. It is put in the student's medical file. It becomes a part of the school-based medical list so that teachers are aware of who has permission and who does not. It is managed through the school health office. I also included the parent form as well. The next policy, Physical Restraint and Seclusion of Students, 5144.1. This was last revised in 19, not 1918, 2018. And minor changes to policy language, updated legal references. Any questions, concerns, or changes? Same with corresponding regulations. We made applicable changes. We included the district forms. This was provided to us by our attorney's office, Shipman Goodwin. The next policy is 5144.11, Student Detention. We have the policy. Any questions, concerns, or changes anyone would like to recommend at this time? So, I do, I do need to say, for the regulation, when I was updating these after our last meeting, I apparently lost my mind and forgot to go back to it. So, if you see on your version, it says insert text. That is obviously not what I'm going to recommend as the language. I was horrified when I saw that today, so I'll just put that right out there. But I will include language because there was lengthy discussion about lunch detentions in terms of parent notification. So, we will, for your last read, have the actual real language that we'll use in this regulation, which is fantastic. So, I apologize for that.
That was the regulation?
Yes, that was the regulation. The next one, Policy 5145.2, Freedom of Speech, Expression of Speech. This policy had some major redos, last adopted in 1997. And this policy, Mrs. Castelli, I know you weren't here when I said this, so I'm just going to repeat it for your benefit. It is only for printed materials. It is not for, it's not intended to be for oral speech. You're welcome. The next policy is Policy 5145.4, American with Disabilities Act, Section 504. This is a policy that was provided to us through our attorney's office. Minor changes to address and language, updated legal references, last revised in 2018. Any questions, concerns, or changes being recommended? Same goes for the regulation. We added what we needed to add per the advice of our attorneys and removed what we needed to remove. This was also last revised in 2018. Any questions, concerns, or recommended language changes? The next policy is 5145.6, which is Student Grievance, Procedure and Complaints. Minor change from Guidance to School Counselors, last revised in 1998. Any additional changes recommended by the board at this time? Policy 5145.12 and the corresponding regulation, this was also a hefty revision, last revised in 1995. This particular policy and regulation, we are using the model provided to us by our attorney's office. Are there any questions, concerns, or recommended language changes at this time? Policy 5145.15, Direct Reinformation, also was another major redo as this one was 20 years old. Any questions, concerns, or recommended language changes at this time? The next one is Policy 5145.44 and the Administrative Regulation to Correspond with the Policy. This is Title IX, the Prohibition of Sex Discrimination and Sexual Harassment for Students. This particular policy and... This particular policy and regulation were last revised just last year in 2020, but needed to have some changes based on the advice from our attorneys. I have also included for your review, the different forms that we use. They will be included on our website for complaint forms for students to fill out regarding sexual harassment, sex discrimination, that's not sexual harassment, notice of sexual harassment allegations, and the informal resolution process that will be on our website. Any questions, concerns, or recommended language changes at this time? The next one is breathalyzer testing, policy 5145.124. This was last done in 1996. Minor changes to this one. Any questions, comments, or recommended language changes at this time? The next one is a regulation that we missed, if you recall. When we changed the policy in the personnel section, we were debating on language changes to the policy that when we finally landed on what the board agreed to, we did not update the regulation at this time. So this regulation reflects the current language in our policy that was board-approved. Any questions, comments, or changes of language? It is the administrative regulation regarding the hiring of professional staff, 4111.2A. And then the next one is the policy 5132 for dress code. This was last reviewed in 1998. This is the Cabe model for the policy. Any questions, comments, or recommended language changes to the policy? Okay. Mrs. Costelli?
Can we go back to 4111.2A? Under letter E, it says, after approval of the recommended candidate, the superintendent of schools board. What do we try to say there?
The board just has to be struck out. The superintendent of schools will vote on approval.
So what's being struck out?
The word board.
The word board, okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
It just didn't make sense, so, thank you.
Yep, nope, I hear ya. Okay. And then the last item, 12.57, is the revisions to the regulation, 5132A, which is the dress code regulation. After the first read, it was requested that we remove the word tattoo under definitions, number two grooming, because once it's done, it's done. And we also discussed under letter E, under basic dress code, hats and other headwear must allow the face and ears, which we added, to be visible to staff and not interfere with the line of sight of any student or staff. This language was added, "and ears," to the hat section so that it matched the hoodie section. Any questions, comments, or recommended language changes at this time? Mr. Vado?
Yeah, I don't think it's a secret that I am sort of against hats and hoodies in school. Call me old-school. First of all, we have an issue because as far as the hats right now, one high school does allow it and the other one does not. So I would imagine with this regulation, both high schools would now allow it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. My second issue is with the hoodies. I have a real problem with students being allowed to have their hoods up from their sweatshirts. And first of all, if you look at it from a practical sense, it says here that the ears need to be visible to the staff and not interfere with the line of sight of any student or staff. I cannot perceive a teacher, each time a class comes in the classroom, checking out every kid who has a hoodie on to see if their ears are showing. I just think that's totally ridiculous. And to avoid that time that they would take to do that and remind a student to show their ears, keep the hoods off. This way, there's no problem. And I also think it just looks nicer not to have a child or a bunch of kids walking around with hoods on their head, which could also impair their, you know, walking down the hallway and seeing everything that they're supposed to, with a peripheral vision, let's say. Because maybe they'll keep it behind their ears while they're in class, but once they get out in the hallway, that hood is going to come closer to the face, as you know. And it just might hinder their vision walking down the hallway or downstairs. I just think, overall, I have an issue with the hoodies for those reasons I just stated, plus the fact I just think they look terrible. And I think our kids should look a little more presentable. I looked at our two teams here tonight with everybody dressed up. Wouldn't that be nice if kids came to school every day looking like that? They can dress up when they want to, and I think it's something we could help to enforce one way or another, but certainly hoodies do not help that. But that's just my opinion. I don't know if anybody else is thinking about that or would like to see that part of the policy or regulation removed.
Any other board members care to comment? Mr. Ross?
Yeah, I've got friends who have a child that's very shy. And she's currently a junior at Sheen High School. And she's comfortable, she is more comfortable being able to wear the hoodie. It's a security blanket, so to speak, for her. And I've seen several students wearing hoodies, many students wearing hoodies. And I don't see anything wrong with it. I think as long as it conforms to the regulation and they're not hiding their face. And I know the reason to see the ears, to see if they have the earplugs for their cellphone there. And I get that, but at a quick glance, they can tell that. And I don't think it's been a major problem at the schools. It's just it's there, and if the teacher wants to enforce it. But I see nothing wrong with the kids, as long as the kid's face isn't covered and, believe me, wearing a hoodie doesn't interfere with any of the kids I see. How they get around, it's not dangerous. And I think it's fine, just the way it is. Thank you.
Any other board members care to comment?
Okay, so what you would just, Mr. Vado, you were the only person who asked for that part to be removed. And since I'm going to need to ask if the other board members agree with you before I can make that change, okay? I know, but just for the record, I'm sorry. So Mrs. Roscoe, do you want to keep it the way it is?
I do.
Okay, Mrs. Raccio?
I'm comfortable with the way it is because this has been vetted by the administration at both schools.
Okay, Mr. Ross?
I'm comfortable.
Mrs. Regan?
Keep it the way it is, thank you.
Mrs. Costelli?
I'm comfortable as well. Mike, I appreciate your comments, but someone who's always cold, as you can see, I'm all bundled up again. I think the hoodie, because of the dramatic changes in temperature from one, you know, one classroom to another, I look at it more from a comfort perspective, and I, maybe it's just because I'm old, but anyway, I want the kids to feel warm when they, it can't be, if you're cold, you can't learn. At least I can't. I have to be comfortable. So if it makes them comfortable, that's why I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Deering?
I agree, leave it as is.
Thank you.
Say one more thing?
Absolutely.
I really don't think it's a matter, Mrs. Costelli, of heat or being cold. I just think it's a fad, and I think it doesn't look nice, but that's
I agree, it doesn't look nice.
Being around the same age as you, I can understand talking about.
Okay, that is all of the
I will bring it up at the next read as well.
I look forward to it, thank you. So you'll see these policies on the consent agenda at the end of April for the full board meeting. That's all for me.
And just to remind everybody, we did discuss and approve at the last instructional, special instructional meeting for policy, that the policy committee is now the first read. This is the second read, and next month will be the third read. So we have eliminated a couple reams of paper by counting the policy committee as the first read. All board members still get two looks at a policy before it becomes final, but we've gone down to three reads instead of four of the policies.
Right, and you'll see that in effect for the first instructional meeting in April, where the policies that went to the March policy committee two weeks ago, and then again tomorrow, will be the second read at the next instructional meeting.
That will at least get us to pass a policy in a month instead of two months.
In a month, yes.
So it condenses. Yes, Mr. Vado?
Quick question. Is there a policy that says we do that?
Actually, it will be upcoming when you redo your board bylaws, so
We're going to have to have a policy for that policy.
You'll update your board bylaw to reflect
The bylaws.
What you just agreed to, yes.
Just asking.
That's in May or June.
At which time, we could even add the policy committee to the bylaws, because right now it's an ad hoc.
We could do whatever y'all want.
Okay. We could stay here even longer and talk more policy, Mrs. Latour. Okay, thank you very much. I know that this has been a heavy lift, and especially for the members of the policy committee. I appreciate all the work and time that you've put into this. I know it's a ton of reading, and your comments are always very, very relevant and much appreciated. Moving on to the operations committee, Mrs. Regan, Mrs. Costelli?
Good evening. So the operations committee was the best way you could think about to spend Valentine's Day. That was met on February, well, I'm sorry, no, that was, we met in March. We did approve the minutes from February 14th, but we did meet in March. We met on March 14th. It was a rather abbreviated meeting, which we do like those. So from the financial reports, Mr. Barone reported that the projected surplus right now is 670,000. There is a reduction in the surplus from the previous month of about 78,000, and that's mainly because of some transfers that we had to, that were done. The cafeteria financial report, we are running a monthly surplus of 142,000 and the year-to-date surplus of 532,000. And I think the best news of that from Mr. Bondi was the fact that we did indeed start the breakfast program at the elementary schools, at two of the elementary schools. So thank you very much for getting that program off the ground, and we look forward to expanding it and hearing about those plans. And then from Mr. Deptula, we did talk about, there wasn't a whole lot from you, I don't believe. We talked about a propane tank project and some of the, about changing some of the reporting that you're going to be doing in terms of the 2% fund. And so I think we'll see that in the next meeting. So we do look forward to that update for next month. And that was it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. 13.2, the approval of the healthy food certification. Mr. Bondi?
So the Connecticut Healthy Food Initiative is a volunteer program that each school district board votes on every year before June 30th. By voting yes to the Healthy Foods Initiative, the board agrees that the food service program adheres to the stringent state standards that govern the nutritional value of the snacks and beverages and à la carte items sold to students that are sold in our cafeterias. In return, the state agrees to pay us, I'm sorry, to provide us with yearly funds equalling 10 cents per lunch meal sold in the prior two years. So in other words, if we vote on next year, we will be receiving 10 cents per meal sold from school year last year, if that makes any sense. Last year, we received $36,357 in funding from the state. By voting on the language in front of you, the board will agree to follow the Connecticut Healthy Food Standards and also agree that the standards can be exempted for any organized after-school events such as school dances, sporting events, and things like that. Any questions or concerns?
I don't believe so. I think, Ms. Regan, there's a couple motions for you to make?
So we do have a couple of motions to make with regards to this. The first one, I make a motion to approve the healthy food option as stated. The healthy food option pursuant to CGS Section 10-215F. The Board of Education or governing authority certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2023. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including, but not limited to, school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or by non-school organizations and groups. You need a second? So can I get a second on that one?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Motion passes. The second one, I make a motion to approve the exemption for food and beverage items as stated below. Exemption for food and beverage items. The Board of Education or governing authority will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards and beverages not listed in Section 10-22Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or a school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is a period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food and beverage sales. Can I get a second on this?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please make a note, Mr. Ross is opposed. Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Costelli and Mrs. Regan. Moving on to new business, I don't believe we have any. The next is the administrative report with Mrs. Belizzi.
Thank you. Good evening. So just a couple of updates to share. We had our first month so far with our mask optional. Last time we were here, we made the changes. So things have gone very well. We're going to continue to monitor the cases as we've been each week, but the numbers are going down. You know, we've seen a little bit of an increase, but not a lot at all. We'll continue to monitor that on our COVID-tracking website. We'll send things home that way. I really want to thank all of our administrators and our parents and our staff and our students because it has gone very well. And so as we move through this, we're continuing to monitor and have discussions about the restrictions and the mitigation strategies that we have in place. Our administrators are starting to invite parents back in, have events and plan events where, you know, community members and parents are in for read-alouds and other opportunities. You heard our students share that the musicals have gone on. So it's nice for us to start to be able to feel like we're getting back to a little bit of normalcy. So that's a good thing, and we hope it continues, and we'll continue to monitor that as we go through and make sure that things don't change as we do. We did hold two weeks ago at both of our high schools. We handed out our home test COVID kits. And so many of our administrators and our central office staff, among many of our students for both high schools, were there to help on both Saturdays, I believe it was March 18th, from like 9:00 to 12:00, to hand it out to family members that had wanted it. We did send home two test kits with every staff member as well. We still have a lot of kits left. So if, you know, there are any staff members or students that are not feeling well that go homesick, we are sure to make sure that they have that with them. We make sure we give it to them if they're in school or they have an opportunity to pick that up. So we're continuing to move forward. We're excited to have things back to a little bit of normalcy, and we'll monitor it as we go. We have another state call tomorrow morning, so we'll see if there are any updates that they can provide us with moving forward. So that is all I have here. I'm going to pass it on to Mrs. Latour. Did you have any updates that you wanted to share? Did you have any updates that you wanted to share?
So I just wanted to update the board. The preschool lottery took place this month for our four-year-old preschool program. We had 176 spots, 128 are full-time and 48 were part-time. We had about 68 children left on the waitlist after the initial lottery. We are continuing to work through the lottery after parents are either accepting or declining their spots. Our lottery is done on a first come, you know, it's random. So if a spot opens, the person that's top on the waitlist will get a call to say a spot is available at Cook Hill School for part-time or Moses Y. Beach full-time. They have 48 hours to accept or decline. If they decline it, they go to the bottom and we move on to the next person. We do have the majority of the families right now still on the waitlist. 41 students are on the waitlist who have not received any call for a spot yet. 26 are still on the waitlist because they declined the spot that we gave them when they were on the waitlist originally. A lot of our families right now just want full-time. So what comes up most at this point are the part-time spots. And so we are trying actively as they come up to fill them with the remaining people on the waitlist. So that's been an ongoing event in our office. Every day we deal with preschool and the waitlist. So I appreciate very much the families at home and their patience. We had two successful professional development opportunities this month. We had a full day last week and then the week prior, we had an early release day. Staff engaged in workshops that we had outside presenters come in. Mike Stevens was in our district, TJ Jemison, our math consultants that are working with us, Matt Dodana from Goodwin College was working with our CTE teachers in the high school. We had Elke, I don't know her last name, but she's from Literacy Howe. She was working with our stu, our staff at the elementary level. And then we had many teachers working with our curriculum coordinators or working with their departmental colleagues. It really was a, a day that was filled with a variety of different options for our staff to engage not only with new learning, but with their curricular units and how they'll continue to plan for the remainder of this year. So that was great. We have two additional early release days, one in April, one in May, to conclude the year. And I'm really, really pleased with the progression of PD that we were able to provide our staff from the summer through June. It's so helpful to have a continuation of, of conversation, of, of new trends and, and best practice instead of flitting from one thing to the next. It really provides some stability and it also provides a lot of insight and reflection from our staff to be able to say, you know, at our last PD, we learned this, I tried it, this is what happened here, you know, here's what worked, here's what didn't, how, how can we move through? I will say to some of our consultants who are here, Literacy Howe, Mike Stevens, TJ, they've been in monthly. I was fortunate enough to be able to go to our middle schools last week to see Mike Stevens do some walkthroughs and then debrief with our staff, which was really a treat for me. And I did the same today at one of our elementaries and I'm going back again tomorrow. So we have a lot of great things going on in the district. It's very exciting. And then I just want to give our families at home an update as well as our board. April begins the month of statewide assessments. So our third through eighth graders after the April break will begin the NGSS testing, which is the statewide mandated science assessment that's given in grades five, eight, and 11. Our third through eighth graders will begin the ESPA testing, the Smarter Balance Assessment, which takes place in English Language Arts and Mathematics. And as you know, from the high school reports that we received this evening, our juniors last week took the SAT, which is required by the state of Connecticut for our juniors. And we should get results back before the end of the year on all of those. And once we get them and analyze our data, I will make sure, I already have scheduled for your information, a data presentation for September so that you can start the new school year knowing exactly where we stand from the year prior. So that's all for curriculum and instruction.
Thank you very much. And Mrs. Lator, with the preschool opportunities, I know that that is a heavy lift for your area and it's a, something that Wallingford really prides itself in as preschool is not mandated. It is something that we take on in addition to the K-12 education that we provide to Wallingford schools, although we do get some Smart Start grant money for it. That preschool does come above and beyond the K-12 that we're required to do out of our budget. And I know it's a heavy lift and it's just so important, especially now after COVID, that children have some type of structured environment before entering kindergarten as a full day. So thank you very much. I, I know it's a lot.
I will say all the thanks go to Rose Stabeel and Jean Barasa-Zehoff in my office, who have spent many hours dealing with the paperwork involved with preschool, the lottery, the phone calls, the questions. And, you know, for our families at home, there is exhilaration when they know they got a spot and then there's frustration when I know they're on the waitlist. And so we continue to look at our preschool program, we continue to refine it in the hopes that, you know, in the coming years, we can continue to expand because there is such great need in, in our town to have the preschool as a part of the public school system.
Thank you. And I think the chair of the facilities committee would like to speak on preschool.
Couple of questions. The results of those tests, we're not going to get back until September? They're not going to be revealed to us until September?
Correct. So the school system will get them usually in prior years. We get them mid to end of June, but they're embargoed. We cannot share them publicly until usually September-ish.
So the newspapers and whatnot will not FOI or whatever before September?
They can't, yeah.
I just don't want the public to get them before we do.
They, well.
Does that make sense?
It, it does. So you'll have a formal presentation in September. You will get some very broad information the day they become public and the day the newspapers will put them out because that's the day the public can see them. So depending on when you read your news, you, you may have seen my email, you'll get, you'll get something from-
In the news, but you'll get it, we'll get it from you first.
We'll get it from me.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I understand. Okay, as far as the, the workshops, are, are teachers still able to let you know what they're interested in and what they would like to have presented to them or something they're interested in that they would like PD on? Are they still having input?
They do. Through the management team process, you know, every department has a management team. Every department also works closely with their coordinators, especially at the middle school and high school level, through department meetings. There is a balance. There are certain things that as a district require the, the presentation and the focus based on what we're seeing curricularly. And then within the departments, there's also feedback that's provided. The teachers also have self-directed days as part of the professional development plan where they can choose any content or topic to develop, investigate, reflect on. At the middle school, high school level, there are two of those days as there are in the elementary as well. This year, part of the PDEC plan, we did, we split the eight early release days between self-directed and district planned. In some years, we've also had building-based days where the faculty within a building will work with their professional development committee within the school to provide opportunities and options of what they would like to do. So we do try to have variety. This year in particular, we, we have a lot of very focused work happening, especially coming off of COVID. But the coordinators, as I said, work with the departments in general to ensure that there's a balance.
I don't know if I direct this at you or not, but I'm interested in knowing, if you guys can tell me. Do you know how offhand, do we have a lot of children that are applying or going to magnet schools in New Haven? How many of our students? Something you need to get back to me on.
Yeah, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but this is the time of year where we sign off on the residency information for students who are going to magnet schools so we can get that information for you.
How about specifically Thames or Wims?
So Thames and Wims is off of a lottery. It is not, you know, the regular, like Betsy Ross or, or other things, so.
When has that lottery taken place, do you know?
I don't know, I don't do that.
Maybe, maybe that's the wrong question. Do you know how many people are, show, have shown an interest and put their name in that lottery?
I don't believe that the lottery has been happening because we have more seats than interest. So I don't, I know Roxanne used to pull names.
I did too.
And, yeah, so I, I don't believe that there's been as much interest.
I'm just curious because they're both in new buildings now, if there's an interest because, and they also have a, a different focus. Wintergreen does, I think it's more of the arts kind of stuff, but they've done that the last couple of years. And they're at a bigger place now in, in North Haven. And of course, so is Thames, the old Chase School in Waterbury. So I was just wondering if they, if that sparked enough, more interest from Wallingford kids and-
It's all, it's the ACES Parent Open Choice now. We don't do a lottery system at all. And there may be, you know, eight or nine that, that attend the Chase School in Waterbury. I think there's like 30 to 40 of the Wintergreen kids that go.
Oh, 30 something in Wintergreen?
I, I think so, I could be mistaken.
I think you're right, yeah, okay.
I could look tomorrow.
I was just wondering if the interest has grown and there's more people this year.
We can look at it and we can compare from years past and get you guys that information, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other board members? Mr. Doring.
Just one quick question about the preschool lottery. You said that a lot on the waitlist, we're waiting for a full-time slot. Do they have the option to take the part-time slot and then stay on the waitlist for the full-time or is that not an option?
So what we do, Mr. Deering, is after the initial placements, we have a waitlist. We had 68 students on our waitlist and they're rank ordered. When a spot comes open, they have to accept or decline the spot that they were given. If they decline because it's part-time and they're really wanting full-time, they go to the bottom of the waitlist and we move on. You can't stay where you are and wait for a full-time opening. We, we don't take requests, we don't have enough spots to be able to do that. This is the fairest way we see to give everybody an option. So right now, we have, as I said, we have 41 students who ha, are still waiting for that phone call for any spot. And then we have people that went back down to the bottom because they can't do part-time, they're really waiting for full-time. Or they might be waiting for a particular school, they only want Cook Hill or they only want Moses Y. Beach. But, you know, it's hard. It, it's frustrating for families, I understand that. But, you know, we really do try to just keep it very clean and very equitable for all of our families.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Mrs. Turner, do you have any update from your department that you want to share? Not to put you on the spot, but I guess I just did.
I will, so Carrie's department does the four-year-old preschool lottery and my department does the three-year-old preschool lottery. We have had very few families that have declined their spots that they received. Today was the day that we were, were to be notified by and we are looking at three families who declined out of 84, I believe it was. So we will be reaching out to some families and going from there. Other than that, our department is busy supporting schools in the accommodations for the Smarter Balance as well as getting ready for the research fair.
Thank you very much. With that, I believe we are on to announcements and our next instructional committee meeting will be held on Monday, April 4th at 6:00 PM via Google Meet. And our next operations committee meeting will be held on Monday, April 18th at 6:00 PM on Google Meet. There's a week off in between there because it is April vacation. The town council will have a public budget meeting on Monday, April 11th at 6:00 PM. That is the time where the public may ask questions. The Board of Education is on vacation that week and although the public can ask questions, they will be recorded at that meeting and they will be answered. There's two opportunities. They will be recorded at that meeting, but will not be answered by Board of Ed members or administration. However, on Wednesday, April 20th, is the town council budget presentation, at which time members of the public can also ask questions of departments who are presenting. The departments presenting that evening are the cafeteria and Board of Education. So at 6:30 on Wednesday, April 20th, is another opportunity for members of the public to ask questions. And obviously at that meeting, the Board of Education will be present. There will be a special Board of Education meeting on Thursday, April 21st. That will be in-person for hiring of an open position. The next date of our regular Board of Education meeting is Monday, April 25th, here at Robert F. Parisi Town Council Chambers at 6:30 PM. And if there's nothing else to come before the board at this time, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all and have a good evening.